Okay, guys, I know we're late and it's totally my fault. I now call the July 18th, 2017 regular council meeting to order. Would council members please denote your presence by depressing your yes switch?
Charlie's not here.
A little more muscle, Charlie. Okay.
All council members are present.
If you want to watch us on TV, the channel's 192 if you're at home. By the way, you don't have to come down here if you want to be able to see it on TV. Let's see, Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, I see some volunteers right out there.
Oh, come on. We'll do it together. What if I come down to you and we do it? Anybody else want to give it a shot? All right, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the July 5th, 2017 regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on July 15th, 2017.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Walsh. Corrections? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the July 6th, 2017 special council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on July 17th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Is that moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Johnson? Corrections? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the July 18th, 2017 bills and claims as audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman Walsh. Please cast your vote. One, okay. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Okay, bright spot. Here we go. You guys ready for this? For over a year, the Casper Police Department's Victim Services Division has wanted to create a soft room where law enforcement officers and staff can visit with victims and their family members in a comfortable, non-threatening location. Domestic assault continues to be prevalent in our community. When victims come to the Casper Police Department to report a crime upon themselves or a family member, they need to know that there is a comfortable refuge in which they can speak and release their fears. The Casper Police Department has made some physical changes in their building layout to accommodate a soft room right off the lobby in the Hall of Justice. The room is easily accessible so victims don't need to be left in the open in a waiting room. At this time, I'd like to ask Leslie Fritzler, Victim Services Specialist, to say a few additional comments about what the soft room will offer to our community.
Good afternoon, council members. This is Sergeant Mike Ogden. He's over the Investigations Unit. He's joining me this afternoon. So, as you mentioned, in keeping with the department's focus on meeting the needs of victims and focusing on our response to victims, the Casper Police Department is happy to announce that we are moving forward with the development of the soft room. This has been a project that we have been working on for several months, and now as a result of some generous donors in our community, we are able to complete this room in the near future. We would like to thank the Casper Rotary Club, Farnham's Furniture Galleries, and the Casper Fraternal Order of Police for donating furniture for this room. The soft room will be an all-purpose room and will serve as an alternative to the interview rooms we are currently using to interview suspects and survivors alike. Until now, we have been using these interview rooms to question suspects and to also interview victims or witnesses. This room will be significantly different with comfortable seating, soothing paint colors, and will provide individuals and family a more physically and psychologically comfortable room. Being in a comfortable room, a non-threatening environment, can help a victim during the interview process. Officers feel more relaxed, they begin to establish a relationship with victims, and they can gain the trust of a victim, helping to gain a more detailed interview which ultimately helps us in prosecution. This room will serve several purposes. One, to interview victims and witnesses. We'll also be able to meet with survivors of traumatic incidents, provide death notifications as needed, and we also anticipate this room to be used by other agencies such as the Neutrona County Sheriff's Office or the Neutrona County Coroner's Office. We would like to thank our community partners who have made this donation possible and that we acknowledge without this, this room would not be possible. Thank you.
Did you have some words, speech?
I just want to thank everybody for donating and supporting us while we build this soft room.
Excellent, and I see officers in the audience, so I think all of our officers need to stand up so that we can give you a round of applause along with Leslie. Come on, don't be bashful. We are very proud of you guys.
We also have Chaz Farnham here from Farnham's Furniture Gallery is present with us today as well.
Come on, Chaz, stand up. Woo-hoo. Thank you. And so, is Liz taking responsibility for Rotary, or do we have another Rotarian?
It should be in your script.
Oh, I have it, but I just wanted, because you're my queen Rotarian. Okay, thank you all for the...
Yeah, I'll vote.
Okay, okay, I'll be ready. Thank you all for your dedication to this project. Through the generosity of three local organizations, the furniture needs to create the soft aspect of the room have been filled. Tonight, the City Council would like to ask the following organizations to step up to the lectern and be acknowledged for your financial gifts, which will offer a sustainable service to our community. The Casper Rotary Foundation, Farnham's Furniture, Fraternal Order of Police. And just so you know, y'all have to give at least a five-minute speech. Oh, especially you. Oh, yeah, five-minute limit, but you've got to meet the five minutes, and yeah, we should make you start. Did you guys have anything that you wanted to say?
Thank you for putting it together. I think it's an awesome, awesome thing, and I know you guys were really best as a community and city. You guys did a very difficult job on very extreme circumstances. We actually really appreciate it.
This is a great step forward. Kodak moment up back here. Okay, you guys are stuck with me. Photo op, we have to hit the back wall. But I won't make y'all do a silly picture.
There's no numbers above your head, is there? I guess you have to hold them, right? The numbers?
Do we need two rows, ladies?
You don't need to squat.
Yeah. You can share. If I had hands on, I could squat. You know what? How about this? Okay. We're going to go one row standing down here, one row right behind us, so you guys are going to have to scoot up to the wood here. Does that make it a little bit easier, ladies? And there's no hiding back behind any of us. Okay, how's that?
Perfect.
Thank you for your generosity. The City will provide a recognition plaque in the room with your names noted, and once the soft room is complete, we will include the ribbon cutting, so we won't clap for them because they all deserted us. But they're rock stars.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
May I explain that to some people that don't know what a soft room would be?
Absolutely. And then Amanda, if you have any comments you want to make?
So, the soft room in the police department, typically if you come in to be, to offer a statement or be questioned, you go into, where we take the bad guys, to discuss the suspect aspect of a crime. And the evolution of police departments just hasn't kept up with that real sterile... They are environments that look very similar to a jail, and victims of crime go in there having just gone through whatever issue they're facing, and it is not a very inviting and pleasant place. It's not where you would want to have a discussion, it's not where you would feel comfortable doing anything, and that's by design because it's for the bad guys. This room offers, that location, to have conversations with people, get details of whatever situation may have brought them in there, and it's in an environment where you don't feel like you're the suspect. If you're the suspect, you should feel like that, but if not, then you should not have to go through that. Well, it's a little bit mentally crushing if you've got a problem and you're trying to report it, so I think this is a fantastic thing, and I'm glad that they got it all, got all the pieces put together.
Councilman Huckabee?
I can attest to that experience, and it is extremely unpleasant. I am very grateful that the police department and the generous donors of our community have stepped up and recognized the need that was there. I think that our victims that came forward and spoke played an instrumental part of that, and I feel like this is just another step of validation and that they're being heard, and that the police department is taking steps to address those issues that were identified. Nothing happens overnight, but I'm very grateful, and I do hope that, you know, this is part of that repairing the relationship that was severed.
Okay. Thank you. All right, please read the consent agenda titles.
Establish August 1st, 2017 as the public hearing date for consideration of an ordinance to vacate a portion of the alley south of West Yellowstone Highway between David Street and Ash Street.
The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, establish the public hearing date just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Powell. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the issuance of new Restaurant Liquor License Number 35 to Downturn Wings &amp; Greens located at 4035 CY Avenue. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have four exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Tracy Belser to J. Carter Napier dated June 16th, 2017. Exhibit number two being the affidavit publication. That document is published in the Casper Star Tribune dated July 10th, 2017. Exhibit number three being the affidavit website publication as published on the City of Casper website. That document dated June 19th, 2017. And exhibit number four, that being the actual liquor license application, which was filed with the City on May 30th, 2017.
Mr. City Manager, your report.
Madam Mayor, this is the opportunity council has to consider to issue a new license and an address that has not had a license before with regard to providing alcohol on a restaurant liquor license basis.
Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, let us those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of the liquor license to please approach the lectern. If you want to speak in favor of the liquor license, fill us in.
And I am the co-owner of Downturn Wings &amp; Greens, and we just, you know, we give a lot back to our community. We've only been in business for seven months. We've supported a whole bunch of different varieties of topics. We do softball, midget football. We actually helped host the Free Barbecue that was in Washington Park on June 4th, and we just would like to find another route of revenue to help us give back to our community because that's what we're about, small business. We've got like 10 employees, and it just would help a whole bunch with our revenue.
Excellent. Does council have any questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, did you have... Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor? This time, let us those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to please approach the lectern. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against the issuance of the Restaurant Liquor License, I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 35.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Huckabee. Amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Congratulations, you guys are set. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 9A1, a resolution removing hours of operation restrictions temporarily for all liquor license holders for the night prior to the eclipse. Item 9A2, a resolution authorizing Amendment Number 2 to the outside-city water and sewer service contract with the True Family. Item 9A3, a resolution authorizing a contract for professional services with HDR Engineering, Inc., for ongoing studies, tasks, and activities regarding water rights and water supply activities. Item 9A4, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Pittsburgh Tank and Tower Maintenance Company, Inc., for the Sunrise II South Water Storage Tank interior painting project. Item 9A5, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Wyoming Governor's Big Game License Coalition All Wildlife Account. Item 9A6, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Dave Lowden Construction, Inc., for the Casper Public Utilities Roof Replacements Project. Item 9A7, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Town of Evansville Metro Road Extension Project. Item 9A8, a resolution authorizing submission of a grant application to the Wyoming Department of Transportation for the Transportation Alternatives Program for Phase 3 of the Cas... pardon me, Rotary Park Pathway Project. Item 9A9, a resolution authorizing an easement from the City of Casper to Quest Corporation. Item 9A10, a resolution authorizing a professional services contract with Kone, Inc., for the servicing of city-owned elevators. Item 9A11, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with CW Corner, LLC, to allocate their proportionate share of the Country Club Road Improvement costs. Item 9A12, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with East Elkhorn Ranch, LLC, to allocate their proportionate share of the Country Club Road Improvement costs. Item 9A13, a resolution rescinding Resolution Number 009 and adopting rules of the City Council for the City of Casper, Wyoming.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Walsh. Abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Please read the consent minute action title.
Authorizing the purchase of one combination sewer jet-vac truck body from EnviroClean and Intermountain for use by the, for use by the wastewater collection division of the Public Services Department.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda item just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Powell. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
All right, now's the time. We'd invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we ask the following. Please give us your name and address. Council will not respond to personnel matters, and we refer those to the City Manager. Questions posed by speakers might not be answered, and please keep your presentations to five minutes. So come on down, whoever's first. Okay, nobody wants to come down, so with that... You know, I'm just having fun with y'all.
I was going to give, Keith, 5:42, South Durbin. I was going to give you guys a few minutes, few months' break from, I assume, what you consider my annoying comments, but the article about the appointment of a chief financial officer for the city irked me. Many years ago, I asked the city staff if there was a CFO in it, and they said, "Oh, no, 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 we don't have one." The city manager does. Most of that and other people within the higher hierarchy of the city government also take different responsibilities, so we don't have a CFO, because I was inquiring, I think you probably remember Mayor Humphrey regarding our portfolio at that time and who was responsible for managing our money prior to the financial crisis. So, fast forward to the present. All of a sudden, now, we need a CFO, which begs the question, we were getting a city manager with such great financial expertise, what did we get? If he thinks he needs a CFO, something's seriously wrong here. This is another strike, in my opinion, against him. He already showed up nine minutes late to the first work session. There's 30 of us waiting there. To me, that's 270 minutes that was wasted. It's an insult to the people that were there. If you work for me, punctuality is a very important issue. It's very quantifiably measurable of a person's characteristic. The last work session, he was also late, but he was with the city mayor, so I assume there was some pre-work session discussion that justified that. But he was late before, which brings me back to why do we need a CFO? We're paying him $195,000 plus benefits. If we're paying for a CFO for $115 to $125, assuming the paper is correct, plus all the indirect costs and everything else, we're talking like 400, close to $400,000. For what?
So, let me tackle a couple of those. If the city manager's late, it's always my fault because I talk too much. I will own that. That it's always my fault, because we usually meet a little bit before we start. For the CFO position, I think in the past, BH, before he took over as city manager, really was kind of our CFO. I mean, he was the money guru. Maybe his title wasn't CFO, but he was the one person that really seemed to have a pretty big grasp of the money. We don't have him anymore, and so what our city manager has done is shifted staffing so that there's actually no impact on the staffing levels, but we will have somebody with money experience, which will replace that experience that left this year.
My point is, if I was to hire somebody, that's if I was just a person hiring, not as a group, but individually, if I'm looking for a city manager, I want somebody who has expertise, because that's what I thought everybody was talking about, his great expertise in finances. So I assume when I heard this, oh, this guy's a number cruncher, he's detailed, he knows how to do cost variance analysis and things like that. So therefore, I thought this is why we're paying him a lot more than the prior managers and things like this. We're paying for this ability, and all of a sudden, blindsided, and when I looked on the internet, a CFO? What for? My question is, I know you guys don't have to answer questions, but I'm going to ask it anyhow. Prior to this announcement, during the discussion of hiring him, were council members discussing the fact of getting a CFO?
We were fully aware, yes.
So, at that time, when we did the budget hearing a few weeks ago, there was no discussion is, by the way, we might need another 100 and whatever amount of money to pay for a CFO.
But the good news is, we won't actually need the money because we'll be saving in... He's adjusting staff and rekind of organizing in a way that there won't be an impact on the budget. And I'm sorry, I'm talking too much, I'm taking up your time.
I'm just saying, what the paper said, the paper, I'm just going to... Sometimes what the paper says and what, you know, it's sort of like, whatever Fox News, I've been seeing the news here, is because the paper said that the adjustment would not totally cover, and it would have to come out of reserves, and that's why the public, the blame is coming on you, and it maybe should be more directed towards the Tribune, and should have deleted, if you don't know, delete something, don't include it in an article. Is, it seems like you guys, oh, they knew about this beforehand, we never discussed them there in the budget session, and all of a sudden, now it's popping up, and we're going to be another $125, whatever you're paying, plus there's other indirect costs, you know, benefits, things like that, it starts adding up. And I just, I really still think that this is a responsibility that a city manager should be able to do. We have too many people in bureaucracy. I'm not a big bureaucracy people. I mean, I've worked, when I worked for another pla... I'm sorry, it's going to cut me off.
I know, and that was partially my fault, but I wanted, I want everybody to know that Carter's doing an amazing job. I'm very proud, and we are going to woo you here shortly when you see some of his suggestions. You're going to sit back there, and you're going to smile, and you're going to be like, that council nailed it this time.
Well, when I see a budget surplus of $3 million, I might be impressed, but until I see a budget surplus of $3 million versus a deficit, I'm not easily impressed on that. But I really think that, believe it or not, today, when I was gathering signatures, this was a huge issue that came up, and people are looking forward to January the 1st when we have direct election to the mayor. This really is backfiring in your faces. You should have been, just, you know, we'll move Ray over, just as upfront, you guys should have been mentioning this weeks ago, you would have looked, your transparency would have been much better.
Yeah, we're out of time. Some of that was my fault, but you're still going to be wooed. You are just going to be so excited. Who else would like to talk to council? And I broke my own rule, didn't I? It's all right, y'all come with me later.
My name is Shannon Eli. 2382, St. Good afternoon. Here in a couple weeks, our group, the Christian Motorcycle Association, goes out to Independence Rock, and I'd like council to come out and you can see what we do out there. We're going to be out there from about the 2nd to the 8th. We're out there all day long, and we've got a few that stay the night out there, and we help the tourists come in, but our main focus is on the bikers coming through, going to Sturgis. We give them water, coffee, and give them directions where they need to go and prayer if they need it. I just kind of encourage the council to come out and they can see what we're all about. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Who else in the audience would like to talk to council? You gave up on the television, didn't you?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Did you see how close my microphone is?
Yeah, yours was good. They're all good tonight.
Go ahead, sorry.
I've actually got an appointment with an ear guy. I missed a couple days, I was gone for 10 days, and I'm reading council policy public statements. Can somebody explain to me more what number two, how that affects us and the public as far as addressing council? Members wishing to speak, other than written request to the city manager by 12 noon on the Monday immediately preceding the council meeting? Is that a council decision, or is that a...
Your Honor, I can address.
I'm assuming this was talked about at the last council meeting.
No, that's been there. This is if you want to speak to a specific item. So if there's a specific item on the agenda that you would like to speak to that normally doesn't have a public comment section, then you can sign up to speak to that. That's something we've had since I've been on council, and it's been there for years.
I think it's been there the whole time I was here, too. So we didn't change that portion that you're looking at on the front page.
Okay. It was supposed to be brought up the last work session and discussed, and it was put on the side. What was that discussion about, please? It didn't get discussed at that meeting, but Ray said it would be discussed at the next meeting.
It gets discussed at the last work session.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I'm going to take up some of your time answering that question. What council discussed was that when we're in work sessions, the work sessions are really starting to run long, and so I'm going to hold people a little bit more accountable that are giving presentations, to try to stick within a certain time allotment so that everybody that needs to present at the work session kind of has a fair, fair chance to speak. What happens is, the first couple of groups speak too long, and then the last couple of groups really get kind of shorted, so we're going to coordinate times a little bit better. So, the first group that comes in gets 20 minutes, second group that comes in gets 20 minutes, but I'm really going to hold those people to those times. And that was really the biggest change, is to try to organize our work sessions a little bit better. We're still welcoming everybody to come down after our public meeting to come talk. Nothing with that changed, except for I need to be more firm on the five-minute rule.
Okay. Your work sessions do appear to be open-ended. You know, anybody on the sideline can speak. Those of us that have come for a while, no, we're not supposed to speak. It's like, everything's changed.
I'm going to fix that.
I don't have a problem with the five-minute rule. I read this to mean, okay, I have to submit in writing that I want to speak, and I don't know that until I get fired up here.
You can always speak at the end of the meeting. Some people watch the agendas, and they want to speak to a specific topic where we don't... actually usually allow public comment, or if you wanna, you know, sign up to let us know how many are gonna talk during a public hearing, you don't have to do that, but I think it's more for middle-of-the-meeting-type items that we need to know if people want to talk. So, if you wanna talk to a specific issue before we pass it, you need to call in advance and let them know you wanna talk, and that's how we can kinda get you on the agenda on certain topics.
I see. So, does that tell me that the Joshua Warehouse presentation last time will be held to twenty minutes or to five minutes?
I'll probably have to look at the agenda and see how many items are on there, and then do my best to...
Okay.
...to give everybody the fair amount they need for their presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good to see ya. Anyone else in the audience? Good evening.
Twenty-two WSB. I just wanted to clarify that number two also, and I'm being redundant, I'm sorry, but I think it says, an item already on the agenda. Well, we come over and get the agenda every council meeting, but it's not ready the day before. So, that's a problem.
Do you guys have the internet at home?
I can't access the, the site anymore, I don't know what happened.
Okay. Because that would be the best way to go, is it's on the internet Friday, so you could see it in advance.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. And if, if you want me to come over and see if I can figure out a problem, if there's something going on with your internet, to make sure you can get on the website, I'll come over and do that.
Great, I appreciate that.
Yeah. All right, thanks. You know how to find me, right, Mary Ann? Okay. I, I've seen you a few times, so I think I know where to find you. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak to council? Okay, with that, we're gonna go around the table, we'll start with Councilman Hopkins.
Got a few items to bring up tonight. These guys are gonna talk about Water Board, but this week, we had a Amoco-reuse Joint Powers Board meeting, and they're working with our consultants to do a development plan, and that should be made public here within the next few months, it's looking pretty good. We had a meeting of the Old Yellowstone Group, OYD Group, this week, on Monday, and we had discussed some plans for updates on parking and so forth during the eclipse, and I'm sure that'll be hitting the pressure soon. It's a little less ominous than the first things we had talked about. Also, there's gonna be, we discussed with the group, there's gonna be, we have allocated eighty thousand dollars for parking study, and so a request proposals will be coming together on that, and this will be concentrated probably, as I understand it, mostly on downtown areas, but I'm sure there'll be some other issues that have to be brought into that. The second one, or the third thing that came up in the OYD Group is, they realized that they are having a fairly large number of group get-togethers down there, and there's always bands playing, so they ask us to take a look at issues with sounds later in the evening, and because they wanna, we wanna try and avoid some issues, and, and as it stands now, we might have to take a look at some of our ordinances, deal with that, because we haven't really had anything quite like this before. The next thing, I attended a CADA quarterly meeting this morning, and they've got a relatively new initiative. There, there's, there are folks that work for large companies called site selectors, and right now, CADA has a group of these folks that are coming in in September, and it'll be the first time that we have ever entertained site selection groups from specific companies. It was from four different states, as I recall, so they will be here in September. They're also looking for new members. If you folks feel you wanna join CADA's group, they're always looking for new members, so that's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Walsh.
Just to give everybody a heads up, we, the water plant's been making about thirty million more gallons a day than it has last year at this time, so just to keep things green, you might be watering your lawn, and that will translate into the water bill, so take a look at that, and it might be also a good time to check and see if there's anything that's leaching water out of your house, leaky faucets or that kinda thing. I remember last year, that was an issue that caught people by surprise, and it's been dry, so this same thing's gonna occur, but questions come up about your water bill, I'm sure that our staff will be happy to review that with you when it happens, but it is going to increase. The other thing I'd like to say is, I support the manager's decision to get a CFO. Any multimillion organization, million-dollar organization should have somebody that specializes in that. City manager's role is to efficiently manage the entire overall government. While he certainly has a background in that, he's gonna have people that specifically deal with that issue day-to-day, just like every other department head, and he, he doesn't do it all, or he fails at everything. So, while it's in vogue, it seems to attack everything that someone does, I would like you to wait, hold off your personal attacks on the city manager, until you find out if he's done something that's wrong, because right now, things are moving well. Time will tell whether these are good decisions or not, but I believe they will be, and I support your decision to do that a hundred percent.
Thank you, Councilman Powell.
Thank you, your honor. Yes, I think it would be hard, very difficult to find a company with a hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar budget that does not have a CFO. I would also like to clarify, Councilman Hopkins mentioned the eighty-thousand-dollar parking study. Just so everyone is aware, the Casper share of that will be about five thousand dollars, and the money that's set aside for that is federal money that cannot be used for another purpose. And so, we either do this, or we give it back to another community, so they can do it. So, sometimes people get a sticker shock reaction to a figure like that, and I think it will have long-term benefits. The other thing I'd like to mention is that there's a couple items buried in our consent agenda that have to do with the Davis Street Station, and anyone who's followed this project knows that there have been many, many moving parts, and many difficult tasks that had to be achieved before this project could move forward. And all you have to do is drive by there now to see that it's happening, and it's happening because of the persistence of the people who believed in that vision. Tonight, we wrapped up a couple of seemingly small, but still necessary matters involving an easement, and of course, the hard work that staff members and that members of our Downtown Development Authority did, and, and the local private group, Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Kilmer, to arrange the, the trade for the fire station property that we finalized just recently. These things were all difficult, and they all could have been stumbling blocks, would have, that would have stopped the project dead in its tracks, but it kept going because people believed in it and just wouldn't give up. And, and then I think we also should be very proud of the fact, as a community, that over fifty percent of the cost of that project was paid for with donated money. And when you talk to other communities about a project like that, they cannot believe that that much private money was donated to a public project, and it just, it just speaks well of our community and the belief people have in our long-term prospects, and this, this particular one, like anything else, it will get built, and we'll just assume it was always there, and we'll just get used to it. But it's going to change Casper, and it's gonna change Casper for the better, and I'm very excited to see it open in a few weeks. Thank you.
Councilman Huckabee.
I would also like to echo my support of our city manager's decision. The bottom line is, is that a city is a business, and you would be hard-pressed to find any large business that does not have a CEO and a CFO. Mr. Napier's responsibilities are administrative, a CFO oversees financial duties, and I support that, and I think that it's only going to improve the functioning of our city, which benefits all of us. I met yesterday with the director of, I think it's sports is his title, at CACBB yesterday, and learned a lot of really exciting things will be coming up in the sports arena, which is not my forte, as you might imagine, but that was a good meeting. I would also like to remind people, it is fire season, please be mindful. We have so many fires going on right now, and with our county fire being reduced, it's putting a strain on other fire departments. Don't throw cigarette butts out the window, don't start fires. Just please be aware of that, because those are our first responders that have to deal with this day in and day out, and I think it's something that we often take for granted. So, thank you.
Councilman Laird.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple things, and I will, I will comment on Mr. Napier, who I think is a great guy, and I've had a lot of people tell me that before he was ever hired, that have dealt with him. When I found that he was able to cut sixty million dollars off of a budget in Gillette, I think that was the number, somewhere in there, I thought, this guy has to come down here. And so, but before we ever hired him, I kept going around, who's the CFO around here? Who's the accountant? Well, they, I, I didn't know that, but it was McDonald's, and I have been on some big boards, and they all had CFOs. They all had CFOs. If you don't have a CFO on the businesses that we've been involved in, you'd be committing malpractice, because CFOs I'd like to see are CPAs. I don't know if we can get a CPA or not, but taxes change, everything changes, finance changes, and then the management of five-hundred-and-some people, and what Mr. Napier has to do to balance this budget, if it's possible, and I'm hoping it is very possible. And if he's late to one or two meetings, I don't think you should get upset, because I'll tell you what, he was, he was doing something at the time. He's a hard-working man, he has a, he has a lovely family who I still want to meet, and so, I wish you wouldn't have said all that, Roland, but you have a right to say it, but you were wrong about it, in my opinion. The, the Christian bikers, I like that, I like that. I have a Harley, I know when I've rolled into a few towns, you know, I'm the, I'm the, I'm the pressed starched biker, you know, I'm not a biker, I'm a motorcycle rider. And so, I think that's nice, that you all are doing that. Were you setting that up at, again?
Independence Rock.
I think that's fantastic, thanks a lot for that. The time allotments in the work sessions has been the issue in the newspaper here recently, that I, I got my baptism of fire, Councilman Powell pointed that out to me, so now I'm really feel like I'm a true member of the city council, because I've been, had my little fingers singed by, by the Casper Tribune, and so, but in a newspaper article, what I've always tell clients, and I've dealt with newspaper articles for years, when I tried criminal cases years ago, I'd be reading about the trial, and I thought it was a different trial than I was in. I mean, I, I never thought I was, they were, they were printing about my case, and it's difficult to get it all, that's why I'm hoping we'll get the, the Facebook media, and everybody can see it live, they can make their own decision. One gentleman there commented on the Joshua Warehouse presentation, and bless her heart, she was nervous, and she did go on, and it was okay, we, we let her do it, but the thing I would like to see at those meetings is on our agenda, if Mary Ann DiVittorio wants to speak, it said, okay, here's the time you speak, from five o'clock to five-ten, or five-fifteen, or whatever it is, and when that time comes, the next person on the list, Joe Blow, he's from five-fifteen to five-thirty, his block of time he stands up, because you can't have one person speaking an hour and a half, and, and people having to sit there through this whole meeting, because I think there are a lot of people that like to say, well, I don't even have to be there till six, or I have to be there at five, and I hope we can do that for our, for our people, I think they'll like that. And as far as people coming up and speaking here, that wasn't really a, a subject of discussion, because most of the ones I've seen by people here are well within the time, and the mayor has the authority to extend it if they, if it needs to be extended.
Or if the mayor talked too much.
And we all, we all do, and we're, you know, but it's, it's a, it's a learning curve for people, and so sometimes, things have to be said. I, I mentioned that something about not wanting to be a slave to long-winded things, and I'm enslaving you all right now, and probably that's not the proper word, but they were, I had a lot of action on Facebook about, no, you're a servant, and you're this, and you're that, and finally, when it all came down to it, it's, it's, you know, my grandmother, I'd call her, I'd say, what are you doing, Grandma? And she'd say, I'm, I'm slaving in the kitchen, you know, so it was just a comment, it had nothing to do with other than that, and I apologize for anybody, to anybody that was offended by my use of that term. And I want, did wanna mention what Councilman Powell said on that parking study, because it's eighty thousand, people hear that, and they go, wow, but he's right, that, that was a use-it-or-lose-it deal. The government pays for most of that, if we don't use it on that, we lose the money to somebody else, and its cost is five thousand, and we really need to know more in detail what's going on with the parking downtown, because certain people wanna do away with five spots, and do this, and do that, and it's just a big debate, and this may solve the debate. But I think it, it probably could come to having parking meters down there. We're one of the only major cities around that doesn't have parking meters, and that regulates people who are working down there, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna have to park in the parking garage in other areas, and those prime spots in front of businesses should be, should be given to people who are willing to pay a few cents to park, go in, buy their stuff, and leave. I think it's, I think it will ultimately be very helpful to the city. So, Mayor, you do a good job, you really do.
Thank you.
I hope our next mayor, if it's Mr. Pacheco, he can, he can walk in your high-heeled shoes. And...
He's gonna nail it.
And I, I really can't say, Carter, I am just so happy you're here, and Roland's from New York, so it's okay in some ways. I go to New York, and New York people, they just slap you around as part of the deal. I said, Roland, but you're not in New York anymore, and he smiled at me. I think he's a pretty good guy, but, you know, it's like, it's like the, the young man who writes for the Star Tribune, he's from California, twenty-two years old, he's from California. So, he's not from Wyoming, but he's doing the best he can, so thank you for being here.
Where is Arno?
He left. He, he watches this on TV later.
Oh, okay. Counselor.
Well, he does. They tape it, it's all on TV. Didn't you say Channel one-ninety-two? Why don't we set up a deal in here so we can watch ourselves, see how we're looking?
Think we'd be distracted.
Get it in color, you know, you could see, if you're not sitting right, you gotta adjust your tie.
Sit up straight, the hair poofy. All right, Councilman Johnson.
Not a whole lot. So, one of my neighbors is the coach of the Casper Cobras, he lives right across the street from me, and he showed me a plaque, they, they got second place in their tournament, and he wanted me to thank you guys for the, the ball field and the lease and all that, so it was a great, great thing for, for them, so that's all I got, though, other than that.
Councilman Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. My list is kind of long, since I didn't have a chance at the work session to speak. So, I had a great time, I didn't get a chance to go to the parade, but I did spend my lunch hour at Washington Park with the Nitroona County Prevention Coalition, handing out food, snacks, and bags during that time, it was a great event. Never been to Washington Park after the parade, there's a ton of people there, bounce houses, everything, so I'm glad that they're able to put that on, and I was happy to help sponsor that. I'm still working with council and the city manager in terms of trying to work with the Nitroona, or the National League of Cities, in hopes that we can help people that are uninsured and also underinsured, so that they can have a cost savings to them for everyday medications that they might be taking. Last Wednesday, I did attend a presentation by Goldwind, which is a wind energy company, I thought that was interesting. I also had the opportunity to go to Billings, and not only check out Billings downtown, but Wind Farm, too, so I think it's something that could benefit Wyoming, our community, and especially in a time that we're looking to diversify to a certain degree. They have high-paying jobs, and I look forward to seeing how that progresses. They're going to offer free training to pretty much, I guess, any candidate that's interested or qualifies, so they're also putting that training on here in Wyoming. I think it's a, it's a great opportunity. There's a lot of people that are wrapped in oil and gas and coal that are out of work, or that have moved out of the state, unfortunately, such as my... moved out of the state unfortunately, such as my neighbor that moved to Oklahoma just to find work. But that's unfortunate. So had he had the opportunity to be a wind technician, maybe his good family could still be living here in our community. Also, yes, speaking of Billings, while I was in, Billings, similar to what C-85 Wonderbar is trying to put in our downtown community, Montana Brewing Company did buy four parking spaces. And that's the only business establishment that I saw in downtown Billings that was actually able to do something similar to what C-85 is proposing to us. I did see a benefit. The whole thing was packed. People were using it. They have parking garages downtown too. They also have metered parking. And they have non-metered parking on the non-busy streets. And I think that's a good idea, too. I'd also like to see, I've been getting a lot of complaints about people speeding in neighborhoods. I think that's unfortunate. We really need to slow down during summer times. Kids are playing. They're everywhere. It'd be great to just maybe put less emphasis on, you know, the busiest Wyoming Boulevard, things like that, CY. I know there's a need for it. But, you know, the good steens of our, our areas, Riverbend Road, for example, Fifteenth Street, Thirteenth Street, I think those would be, those need to be watched too. Crosswalks, definitely. I see a lot of people not stopping for pedestrians at crosswalks. This is probably one of the few places that I've traveled to that I've seen so many infractions of people not yielding to pedestrians. And I think it's unfortunate. Thank you, Councilman Walsh and Laird, for speaking about the support for our city manager. Said everything I wanted to say. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Yeah, I don't wanna reiterate what everybody has said, but I do support our city manager for that. I wanna make sure that our public knows that it's a smart decision and a central decision that's needed for our city. When you're dealing with a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars, it's a very vital aspect of that. And I think you'd be hard-pressed not to find that in any municipality of our size that they don't have a CFO. So, good move and very, very smart. So very, a hundred percent behind you.
And I believe, if I remember correctly, the auditors have mentioned that that's probably something that certainly needs to be in place. So to be good stewards of taxpayer money, that's one more person to keep an eye out on things. I know our city manager's going through the budget with a fine-tomb comb, fine-tooth comb with his team. I know he's got some suggestions and ideas that he'll be presenting down the road. But as he said and I've heard, he's drinking out of a fire hose right now because we're throwing so much at him. So we will be patient and await your expertise and your ideas. And we don't wanna burn you out. So you, you pace yourself. And I appreciate the staff efficiencies and not needing to necessarily add a new position. Should a position cost a little bit more, I know you're gonna offset it in the savings that you're gonna suggest to us. So for speed enforcement, I suspect we're spread a little bit thin. We'll do the best we can there, but I, I'm thinking that we're short, we're short-staffed. So I'll totally be a police officer, though. I just need a light bar on my car.
Nine down.
Nine down. Yeah. We could all be police officers.
If you have a rail.
So if, if the public and everybody can be patient. We do have badges. I suspect we're not allowed to do that, though.
I have a degree in criminal justice.
So we just gotta run and do the physical and the, you know, the interviews. We got this.
I wanna book a warning, so. I wanna book a, whole book of warnings so I can give out warnings.
Okay. The next meetings of the city council will be a work session to be held at four-thirty PM Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen, in the council's meeting room. And a regular council meeting to be held at six PM Tuesday, August first, twenty-seventeen, in the council chambers. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel. And we'll only reconvene in order to adjourn this regular session. So we will come back out here to adjourn. So I would ask for that motion. Moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote. All members voting aye, motion passed. Thank you. We are in executive session.